Please take your seats. The constable has confirmed that the warrant for this annual town meeting has been properly posted. The town clerk has informed me there is a quorum present. This annual town meeting of the town of Hamilton is now open. My name is Bill Bowler and I'm the town moderator. Welcome to the April 6, 2024 annual town meeting and thank you for coming. I've appointed E.J. Weldon, the assistant moderator in the cafeteria overflow room. If you're in the overflow room, you will be able to hear everything that's going on, but if you want to speak to an article, you'll need to come into the -- this hall and speak at one of the microphones. We'll start as we always do by saying the pledge of allegiance, followed by the national anthem. Please stay standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Harrison Etcher, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. And good morning, Woodstock. Once my heart stops fluttering, I'd like to start with some general reminders. First, if you are a registered voter in Hamilton, you should have picked up a voting clicker, which looks like this. If you haven't and wish to vote, then please get one now. Second, please turn your cellphone to silent if you need to take or make a call. Please leave the meeting to do so. Third, we welcome non-voters to town meeting, but do ask that you sit in the visitors' area, which is located in the back left section of the auditorium, so it'll be easier to know who is able to vote and who is not. So up in that corner, thank you. I'd like to introduce the people who are sitting up in front, so that you all know who they are. Tom McAnini, K.P. Law, Town Council. Corinne Cale, Town Clerk. Joe Demelwitz, Town Manager. Wendy Markowitz, Finance Director. Sean Farrell, Select Board Chair. And Tom Myers and Bill Olson, members of the Select Board. John McGrath, FinCom Chair. Alex Rendells, Christina Shank-Hargrove and John Prowidge, FinCom Members. I've asked non-resident town officials and those assisting the Select Board or Finance Committee to be present here, so that they may be available to answer questions. Members of the press and video crew have also been allowed to be present. I hope you brought copies of your warrant. If you did not, there may -- there are some extra copies out at the front. The agenda for the meeting is the warrant. It was prepared by the Select Board. To bring in an agenda item before the meeting, I will recognize a member of the sponsoring board committee or individual, so they can make a motion. If the motion is seconded, I will recognize the proponent to speak to you about it. Once they are done, I will open the discussion up to you. Those presenting motions can present from this podium here in the front. To ensure that we have an orderly meeting, if you wish to speak, you must first ask me to recognize you. To save time, I ask that you already be standing at one of the microphones. And just to repeat, as I said, if you're in the overflow room, you'll need to come in here in order to address town meeting. Once you're recognized, please state your name and street address. We'll use the same rules of today's town meeting that we use at every town meeting. You'll have three minutes to make comments or ask questions about the motion. When your three minutes is almost up, I will let you know, so that you can wrap up your comments. If you continue to speak once your time has elapsed, my obligation to maintain a fair and efficient meeting requires that I move on to the next speaker. There is a -- where's the timer? Okay, so if you're at one of these microphones, you'll be able to see the timer and I'm going to try to keep track of the time as well. Your comments and questions must be within what we call the four corners of the motion. Please remember that we are in a legislative session for the town of Hamilton. While we can all agree that spirited debate is welcome, we recognize that being cordial and respectful is a priority for the efficiency of the meeting and that every person who rises to debate a motion has an equal right to be heard. As such, we expect that at this meeting, like all town meetings, people will refrain from making remarks of a personal nature about any town or school officials or any person who was in favor of or against the motion and will just comment on the merits of the motion. Again, to ensure that the meeting is run efficiently, any comments or questions must be directed to the moderator rather than any individual or town official. If I deem it appropriate, I may then ask the person making the motion or another town official to respond through me to the question. Please, no applause, cheering, booing or any other conduct that will disrupt or delay the meeting. All motions to amend must be submitted to the town clerk in writing. And we have a form, amendment worksheet form, that's available from the town clerk that will help us manage any amendments and record-keeping. Just write the -- you can, you know, fill it out and write the form of your amendment. If you need any assistance in framing a motion to amend, Town Council can provide you with some assistance. No more than one amendment may be pending at the same time. A vote is first taken on the amendment and then on the main motion. As I mentioned, when a vote is taken, we'll be using the electronic voting clickers. Joe Demelwitz will demonstrate the use of the clickers in just a moment. In the unlikely event that we have trouble with the new technology, we will revert to the use of voter cards. And I will ask you to raise your voter cards. You should have gotten one of these as well when you came in and checked in. And I will then decide visually whether there is the necessary majority, or two-thirds vote. If I am in doubt or seven voters question the vote immediately after I declare the outcome, I'll have the vote counted by the tellers. We'll now have Joe Demelwitz demonstrate the use of the clickers.
Good morning. I'm going to have the display up for the vote. Yeah, the grids, okay. So you all got voter like this. The green button, 1A, is a yes vote. The red button, 2B, is a no vote. So in a minute, we're going to ask you a sample question that is, did you get your town meeting postcard to let you know how to find the warrant and where the town meeting was? When I -- when voting opens, you can press your votes. It's open. Go ahead, start voting. When the moderator says that the vote is closed, you won't be able to vote anymore and then we'll display the outcome. So, get voting.
Because we're expecting a large number of folks. While the screen will show your -- that your vote has been recorded, it's going to be on two pages. And frankly, unless you have X-ray vision, it'll be difficult to pick it out. But on the little screen on your thing, if it says, "Once you voted," if it says "okay," you know that your vote has been properly counted. Did I steal your thunder?
No, I forgot to say that. Thank you for covering for me.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, well now, our Representative Castor and Senator Tarr here. Yeah, okay, yeah. Again, because we're expecting such a large group for town meeting, I usually allow about 15 seconds for voting. I'm going to allow a little bit longer. And I will try to give a heads-up a few seconds before I'm closing the vote. So, there you have it. Representative Castor, you have some. Oh, yeah, okay. So if folks would vote on the sample question. Okay, and now I'm closing the voting. Okay, so it'll show the vote total there. Okay. And now I'll recognize Representative Kristin Castor.
Thank you. So good to be here in my hometown of Hamilton. I'm Representative Kristin Castor. I represent the 2nd Essex District, which is Hamilton, Ipswich, Rowley, Newbury, Georgetown and Topsfield Precinct 1. Again, so glad to be here. It's been a great year. Thank you for all of you who have contacted me and that we've talked and told stories and hopefully we've resolved some of your issues. And I'm really proud to say that we've done a couple of things I've mentioned in terms of this, the district in general. We've been really successful bringing funding back to the district and trying to connect the dots to a lot of grant applications for public safety, for water, for roads. And over the district, it's been over 2,400,000 of which has been toward for grants that do directly benefit Hamilton and some of the other communities but do affect Hamilton, so I'm really proud to say that. The other piece I wanted to mention is that we did have some tax reform within legislation this year, which is doubling the senior circuit breaker tax credit, so don't forget that when you file your taxes this year. Also, child tax credit, as well as the estate tax exemption moving from 1 million to 2 million. The other thing that I want to say is last year, we were here at this time with a home rule petition for a senior tax deferral and proud to say that the governor has signed that into laws of March 11th. So happy to bring that through the process with Senator Tarr and I as well. So again, thank you. It's been a true droid, so still listen. Listen to be here in a place that I live and love and really shine a light on this district and our issues and the important things that people should know about what we need and who we are. So thank you for that. I also have today a citation to present to Sean Farrell, who is -- has been AA, if you want to come up.
Nope.
No, I don't want the citation. So, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, be hereby known that to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Sean Farrell in recognition of nine years of service to the town of Hamilton as a member and chair of the Select Board and additional services a member of the Community Preservation Committee. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all of your endeavors." So. And signed by myself, but also the Speaker, Ron Mariano. Thank you very much and thank you for having me. And on to voting. And the senator has a couple of other events this morning, but it has -- we should see him at some point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative. Okay. Okay. Article 1-2. Do you hear reports? I recognize Sean Farrell.
I move that the reports of town officers and committees be received and placed on file.
Is there a second? I recognize Mr. Farrell.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you all for coming. I'm Sean Farrell, as you may know. You may be asking why it got kind of shrubbery on me today as one person says, "I'm coming in. My wife is born and raised in Hawaii," and this is kind of a tradition when a big event happens in your life. As the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, I'm pleased to provide a brief report of our town's achievements, challenges and ongoing initiatives. Our dedicated team, consisting of the Select Board, Town Hall staff, various boards and committees, has worked tirelessly to address the needs of our community. Over the last year, we continue to draft new financial policies based on recommendations from the Department of Revenue that build on best practices to help us maintain our fiscal responsibility. We had our best financial audit in my tenure and maintained our AAA bond rating. We've begun to address the state's new mandatory 3A zoning requirement. 3A zoning, in short, will allow a higher density of housing surrounding MBTA stations. Today, we will hopefully vote to support funding the efforts to help write zoning that would be the best for Hamilton's downtown area. Town Hall offices have moved temporarily to the Petten Home State, if you didn't know, as we get ready for the renovation of Town Hall. I'm very grateful the project is finally coming to fruition. It has been a long time in the making. I would like to thank all the people who worked so hard over the years to make it happen, including you, the voters, at town meeting for your support of the project. After much hard work, the Master Plan Steering Committee has finished putting together an updated town master plan. And now the planning board will take some time reviewing it and making comments. The information in this document will help to guide us over the next decade or more. April is Autism Awareness Month. Hamilton Police and Fire and Wenham Police and Fire Departments will once again be hosting a fundraiser for the Hamilton-Wenham Special Education Program at Five Cents Pizza on April 30th. The best part of this is that if you order a delivery after 4:00 p.m., your delivery will be made by one of our town's finest, police, fire, et cetera. On a personal note, this is my last town meeting and as a member of the Select Board, I wanted to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation for the trust you've placed in me over the past decade. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve this community and I'm immensely proud of the progress we've made together. While I'm looking forward to spending more time with my family, I'll deeply miss the opportunity to work alongside the incredible individuals who make up our town staff, elected and appointed boards and volunteer committees. Our town would not be the wonderful place it is without our town manager and Town Hall staff, our teachers and district administrators, our police and firefighters, our rec center and library staff and DPW workers. They are the backbone of our community, wearing many hats and constantly going above and beyond to ensure the well-being of our residents. To each and every one of them, I extend my heartfelt thanks and encourage you to do so as well, as often as you can. I would like to acknowledge Rick Mitchell, or is Rick tonight? Today, I should say. Rick is also retiring from 20-plus years of service to the town as a member of the planning board. Over the years, Rick has made a big impact on the town. I'm grateful for all the time and energy he gave to making the town a great place for us all. I encourage each of you to consider following Rick's example and getting involved in town government. Your voice matters. Whether you serve on a committee, attend town meetings or simply stay informed and engaged, your contributions make a difference. Finally, as we engage in discussions today, I urge everyone to remember the importance of civility and respect. We may have different opinions, but it's through constructive dialogue and collaboration that we can find solutions for our challenges. Let's listen to each other with open minds and hearts, remembering that we all hear because we care deeply about our town and its future. I look forward to witnessing the continued growth and prosperity of our community in the years to come. Thank you. And Mr. Moderator, this time would you recognize John McGrath from the FinCom?
Yeah, I recognize John McGrath, Chairman of the FinCom.
Thanks, Sean. Hi, everybody. Personal note, Sean has been steering the Hamilton-Wenham ship for quite a few years and we're all deeply grateful. And he's a good coach. He brings new members along and really has tremendous patience. So thank you very much. You should -- we had a handout, which you can refer. I'm not going to go through painstakingly everything that's on this form. But what we did a year ago was we basically laid out for the town, here's what the FinCom can see in terms of capital over the next seven years. So we feel an obligation to highlight a pretty aggressive appetite from the schools in the town in terms of capital spending. So let me just make a couple of quick comments. As you probably know, the school department and school building committee are working towards a new elementary school project. As we progressed through that, the range of possibilities was $44 million to $150 million. The decision on which school we choose is actually going to happen in April and I think Eric may reference that later. So what we tried to do is say, the town is considering doing this. In a year from now, we will be coming to the town for a vote on funding. So that's the biggest line item on this budget. And what we tried to do is say, you know, if we were to spend $150 million, the tax impact would be $1,500. So that's how you read this document. One other project I'll just highlight is water projects. And right now, any infrastructure or water projects is funded out of the rate, the quarterly bills that you pay. But there is a $10 million project in the time period that will need to be funded. Water is incredibly critical to our town. And what we want to be able to do is say, okay, these water projects that are being planned, will we be able to fund them out of the fees that you pay or not? So keep in mind that everything on this page is a projection and estimate, as well as the timing of them. So we've posted this information on the FinCom website. It's available. And I would invite anyone who would like to get into more detail on how we constructed this and what the message is here, simply come and join one of our FinCom meetings. There's a lot of painstaking detail behind all this, but this really is a responsibility, I think, of town management and the FinCom to alert you that in the future, the town is planning to spend some significant capital money. And I would dare to say, after living in town for 40 years, I don't think these kind of numbers have ever been on our radar screen because of the size of the new school. So just a point. And one final point I'll make relative to the school. Eric Tracy and the committee has guided the school building team through a very rigorous process. And the state is poised to give Hamilton $50 million for this project. If, in fact, that comes to pass, the final numbers will be available maybe end of the year. So that is a number that Hamilton has never really been eligible for because we've never done a project this big. But if you walk away today with one number in mind, the town and the school district could benefit by that $50 million number. If, in fact, we choose to create a combined school at Cutler, the Winford School Site could potentially generate $20 million of tax revenue over a 30-year period. So as you walk away today, as we think about this new school project, the state is poised to give us approximately $50 million. And the Wintham School Site, in one scenario, could generate $20 million over a 30-year period. So there are some key numbers you can, you know, store away. And I urge you to join in the conversation. Over the next month, the school building committee is going to make this decision. So I urge you to spend some time and focus, ask questions. If you can't make it to a school building committee, certainly come to a FinCom meeting and we can fill you in. Anyway, that's all I had. Any questions on this information, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Are there any questions or comments on receiving reports? Yeah? No? Give a test run, sort of. Okay. Okay, so the motion before the meeting is to accept the reports as filed. You may vote now. Vote yes. Getting ready to close the vote.
Point of order?
Yes?
The vote is for the wrong article, passive alarm team officers and the motion to per report.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to vote again. And we're voting to accept the reports as filed by town committees and boards. Voting is now open. I'm about to close voting. Voting is now closed. The vote is 3:49, yea, 15, nay. The motion passes and I so declare. Article 1-3, Articles for Consent Motion. I will now read the list of articles to be taken up and voted on as one motion. If you want to ask questions or make comments on any article, shout out "hold" as the list is read. Any article that is held will be deleted from the consent motion and taken up and considered according to its pl-. and taken up and considered according to its place on the warrant. Articles two dash one, two dash five, two dash six, two di- Was that a hold? Was that a hold on two dash six? Oh, okay, I thought. Sorry. Two dash seven, two dash eight, two dash twelve, two dash sixteen, and three dash two. I recognize Sean Farrell.
I move that the articles included on the list of Articles for Consent Motion for this 2024 annual town meeting, a copy of which has been delivered to the town clerk to be filed with the minutes of this meeting, be approved by one vote. Each motion to be deemed a separate action under the warrant article having the same corresponding number.
Is there a second? As we typically do at every town meeting, we seek to include a number of routine but necessary articles that are not controversial in one consent motion. This allows us to limit the duration of the meeting so that we can give more time to issues that are more likely to engender debate. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I will move to a vote. Just to repeat, a yes vote is to vote in favor of Articles two dash one, two dash five, two dash six, two dash seven, two dash eight, two dash twelve, two dash sixteen, and three dash two. Voting is now open. I'm about to close voting. Voting is now closed. The vote is three sixteen in favor, twenty, nay. The articles pass, and I so declare. And just to repeat for the record, that's Articles two dash one, two dash five, two dash six, two dash seven, two dash eight, two dash twelve, and two, two dash sixteen, and three dash two. Bear with me a minute while I cross those out. Article two dash two. Hearing no motion, I will move to Article two dash three. Article two dash three, General Town Departmental Appropriations. This is our annual general town and school, long of us appropriations article. I will now recognize Eric Tracy, Superintendent of Schools, to report on the school district budget.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the opportunity to address the citizens of Hamilton. I'd also like to thank the members of the school committee, town manager, members of the Select and Finance Board, and many others who have had a hand in working to present a fiscally responsible budget to you today. One final thank you goes out to Vinnie Leoni, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance, for his work since early November on the planning and development of the final budget. The overall increase in the gross operating costs of the district this year is 1.13%. The school district and town have continued to improve transparency through joint meetings of boards and chairpersons so that everyone's needs are transparent and understood. Go to the first slide, please. Thank you. There are several items to highlight within the budget that was approved by the school committee on February eighth, 2024. Once again, we have continued to wrestle with the difficulty of not being able to fill all of our positions. As noted, the operating budget increase is 1.13%. We've reduced, again, for the second year in a row, FTEs either for our positions that we have been unable to fill or positions that we've had to reorganize because of the same. So we've reduced six point four eight positions within our budget. This is, it's important to note that the reductions impact the secondary level as our elementary grades have continued to increase to the second highest level in eleven years, to eight hundred and forty-seven students pre-K to five. This brings our total staffing reductions over the last two years to more than seventeen FTEs. Some other highlights, we returned seven hundred and seventy-three thousand to the towns for the third year in a row. This allows us to move four hundred and ninety-four thousand to the stabilization fund for athletic facilities improvement. This allows an additional four hundred and ninety-four thousand to add to our OPEB account for our OPEB liability. And it continued the final stage of our smart board replacement. I think the biggest item for people to understand is the FY25 budget includes the first one point five million dollar increase in debt service due to the athletic facilities improvement project. Next slide, please. This slide is an overview of the operating budget and how we break down the major components. As mentioned earlier, last year, we had another difficult year trying to fill positions, leaving us with approximately two point three million in excess and deficiency. We intend to deploy these funds in the following way. Four hundred and ninety-four thousand to the stabilization fund, the same amount to OPEB, three hundred and fifteen thousand for the final phase of the displays in our, in our digital display project, two hundred and twenty-five thousand for capital repairs across the district in the last seven seventy-three. Back to the towns. Next slide, please. Here is a more detailed look at the FY25 budget, including debt service. We use the total operating expenditures of forty-four and a half million and add our debt service, which is this year slightly over two million. Then we subtract our offsets and other revenues, giving us the final total assessment to the towns of thirty-seven million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. Next slide. It's important to note that we have several debt obligations we've been part, that have been part of the budget for many years, including things like the Buick or Winthrop boiler, window replacements, the Cutler roof, and Winthrop sprinkler system. For FY25, there's an additional one point five million dollar increase in debt due to the first payment of the athletic facilities improvement project. Next slide, please. Since we were approved to open and fund the stabilization fund, we are also required to report out annually on changes. This slide notes that there have been no money expended, monies expended from the fund to date, and we've gained in interest twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars, bringing the total to one point seven six, uh, excuse me, one point seven three million. This can also be found in our district budget book, which is available on our website and also available by the QR code on the flyer you got today. Sixty pages of exciting reading. Next slide, please. And this chart represents how we report our budget to the Mass Department of Education. It shows a better breakdown of gross increase of the district operating budget of 1.13%. It's important to note that we started the budget process by examining the last three years of expenditures and immediately reducing all the areas that were consistently underspent, allowing us to hit that one percent mark. Thank you for trusting me, the students, families, faculty, and staff of Hamilton Wenham Regional School District. We continue to work and prove our schools and our facilities. As I have said in the past, I truly believe that the schools are the glue that binds our communities. We must continue to work together, commit to keeping our communities strong, up to date, and competitive in the future. Thank you for the opportunity to present the FY25 school budget.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. I will now recognize Joe Demelavitz, Town Manager, to report on the town budget.
Good morning. Hope everyone's doing well today. Before I get started, I just want to say thank you to Eric Tracy, Vinnie Leoni, the school committee, and all the building principals. When I got here first, five years ago, the relationship between the towns and the schools was a little bit up and down at times. It's continued to improve every year that I've been here, and a lot of that credit goes to the school committee and Mr. Tracy for the way that they've worked with us openly and honestly. I also want to thank Sean Farrell. He was a member of the select board when you hired me, and I really appreciate that. But he's been, he's been great to work with for the last five years. He's been something that really taught me a lot about your town and what the town needs. So I appreciate, I appreciate his help. The FY25 budget process started back in, actually, really, September, when the select board and the FinCon provided me with budget goals and conditions for the coming year. Among those conditions are to adhere to our budget goals and objectives, which are to avoid a proposition two and a half override, plan for known retirements in the staff, improve our grants management and communications capabilities, make targeted operational changes to improve the efficiency, stability, and sustainability of our town government. And we, one of the big conditions was we had all five unions up for union negotiations for the first time at the same time. Normally, we used to stagger them, but that meant that we were always negotiating with the unions in different economic climates. So we made a decision to align all the contracts, and this was the first year we had to negotiate with all five unions at the same time. We have successfully completed negotiations. All five unions have signed MOAs on new contracts, and we're very happy about that. And we're able to do that and stay under the proposition two and a half. So we're happy about that. Next slide. Budget summary. Total expenditures in this year's budget are forty-two million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars, which represents an increase from last year, or from the current year, of two point seven million dollars, or about six point eight three percent. Town expenses in this budget are seventeen million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, or five point three percent increase. And the educational expenses are twenty-five million, two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, which represents a seven point eight percent increase. That is both for the Hamilton Wenham District and the Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical School. All operating expenses, with the exception of OPEB and retirement payouts, are covered by the raised tax levy. Capital expenses are one point six one zero, sorry, one million, six hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, representing a decrease from last year's capital spending. All of our capital spending and reserve transfers are covered by either free cash, ARPA, or release from the assessors overlay, which means that we're not raising taxes to take care of our capital program. Financial policies for free cash, general stabilization fund, capital stabilization fund, capital spending requirements, and the Water Enterprise retained earning account are all in compliance with our town's financial policies. And that's the biggest thing for me to tell you. I'm going to turn it over to Wendy, who's much nicer to look at, and will be able to tell you a little bit about our revenue and expenditure summary. Wendy Markowitz, our finance writer.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you very much. So looking at the revenue and other financing sources, the biggest part of the revenue is your tax levy at thirty-five point seven million. Of that, the previously approved of one point eight million dollars in debt exclusion and two hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimated new growth. Outside of the tax levy, state aid coming into Hamilton of one point one million, or three percent of the budget, and your local receipts of two point eight million, or seven percent. And that includes multiple IMAs that Hamilton has with other towns. Transfers and other available funds of those transfers, four hundred and sixty thousand coming from Water Enterprise and seven hundred thousand from free cash is about one point two million, or three percent of the budget. And then the capital, as Joe spoke of, is going to be funded by other sources of one point six million. And that brings you to forty-two point four million dollars. And you'll notice on the next two slides, the expenditure summary, it's a balanced budget, the same, forty-two point four million dollars. We do not need an override. And of the operating expenditures, forty point eight million dollars, the largest being education at sixty-two percent of twenty-five point two million. And then unclassified at four point nine million. That includes health insurance, salary reserves. So this year, we had to put a salary reserve in place while we were negotiating in confidence and good faith with all the unions. So the line items for personnel expenses remain the same, and the salary reserve will pick up that difference. Your health insurance liability, property insurance, the pension, OPEB, any reserve that's going to, to support the finance policies are coming out of the unclassified. And then your other biggest expense of ten percent is your public safety at approximately four point one million. And then six percent is your general government at two point six million. Six percent, Department of Public Works, two point four million. One percent is your Health and Human Services, at just under four hundred thousand. And three percent, Culture and Recreation, at nearly one point two million. So that brings the operating expenses to forty point eight million dollars. And followed by the capital expenses, as you can see, the release of overlay two fifty, previously approved ARPA funds at two hundred and fifty thousand, and free cash at one point one million. Total expense for capital is one point six, and the balance budget at forty-two point four million dollars. And I think that leads me to capital, which Joe is going to talk about.
Thank you.
Just going to real quickly go over the capital. We'll vote on the capital on a separate article next, but since the slide's up here, we'll just get it out of the way. As I mentioned, the capital program this year is not being funded from the tax levy. The slide up there shows you the different categories that we'll be asking for your support. The total expenditure is one point six million dollars, with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming out of the assessors overlay, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from ARPA funds. Those projects have already been voted and approved by the select board. They do not require a vote at the town meeting. And one point one one zero seven eight eight, one million, one hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars in free cash. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now read each appropriation. And for any item a voter would like to discuss separately, please shout out "hold." Two million, six hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred two dollars for general town government. Four million, ninety-five thousand, six hundred dollars for public safety.
Hold.
Twenty-four million, eight hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-six for Hamilton Wenham Regional School District. Four hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars for Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District. Two million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred five dollars for Department of Public Works. Three hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars for Health and Human Services. One million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred six dollars for Culture and Recreation. Forty-two, oh, four, excuse me, four million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars for unclassified, totaling forty thousand, forty million, two hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-seven. Okay, well, on the, on the assumption that it may be a clarification, I'm gonna just, okay. So we'll, the gentleman who held the public safety, if you'd come up to the microphone and... Yes, please, your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Chris Fellows, one eight four, Willamette. Just a clarification, because I haven't found a good place to ask this in the, in the, in the warrant. As we go through budgets and appropriation, the one thing that's, that's really stood out to me since I've moved here is just the traffic on Bay Road, particularly at Bay and Asbury, but also Bay and Bridge and Bay and Walnut. Where in the budget do we plan, this is a question for, for Joe, where do we plan for increases in traffic and improvements to public safety? You know, of that nature, as, as, you know...
So you're asking for traffic management type devices?
Sure, stoplights, road raises.
Yeah, so, so traffic management, because one A is a state road, we have to go through the state to have that stuff addressed. We, that wouldn't be in our budget. But to the extent that it, it becomes an issue, we can open a conversation with the state about having more streetlights. Now, I know Wenham has been on that track for ten years, and they don't have it yet. They're looking to add two crosswalks and a streetlight, and they've been saying yes, but they aren't actually doing anything. But why don't you contact my office after the meeting? We have, sit down with the police chief. We can figure out if there's anything we can do locally to address it. And if there isn't, or if it, if what we do is insufficient, then we can open the conversation. And if there isn't, or if it, if what we do is insufficient, then we can open the conversation. So, thank you, thank you.
So your question has been answered, and you're comfortable leaving this in the consent agenda?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I recognize John McGrath.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sums read by the moderator for schools and all other town expenses, which are set forth in the 2025 fiscal year budget in Appendix B of the 2024 Appendix Book, 25, excuse me, Appendix Book, and Appendix C of the 2025 Appendix Book. And the amount...
2024.
Yep. The amount that is listed, the $40,226,627, is actually thoroughly reconciled at the bottom of Appendix B, if anyone has any question on that. Is there a second?
Okay, comments? Do you have some remarks? First, Mr. McGrath.
Yeah, quick comment. As Eric and Joe mentioned, the budget process is lengthy. And I want to commend the school department for raising the bar in terms of rigor and process this year. Eric and Vinnie actually went back in time, reexamined every line item in their budget, and scrubbed and removed expenses that were not necessary. So they really put a diligent effort in there. We could see that as it emerged. So appreciate the principals, the departments, Eric and Vinnie, for doing that. The, in the town, the FinCon meets with each department head and Joe, and we rigorously go through every line item of their budget. There's a healthy give and take. So the process, at least in my tenure over the last three years, has gotten more rigorous and more, more structured. And I really appreciate the effort that both organizations, the school and the town, make in order to bring this budget to you. So you should feel very comfortable with what's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize Mr. Demelowitz.
Yeah, I forgot to mention earlier, when I made my budget presentation, all of the information that you could possibly want about our budget is in our new budget book. We undertook a really, a really lengthy effort this year to move from just spreadsheets that had a bunch of numbers that you'd have to try to figure out to a 200-page book that is on our website, available. You can download it. You can come to us if you don't have a printer at home. You can ask us to print you out a copy. It is, it goes into detail about what is in your budget, what the departments do with the money they get, what the programs we run are, what are, where our revenue comes from. All the questions you could have about how your budget is managed in the town of Hamilton are now in our budget book on the town website. So if you have questions, look at it, and then ask us in time for us to start next year.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, the motion is before us. I won't read the numbers again. They're on the slide here. It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget as set forth and discussed. Apparently, there's some, a little, some delay. And because we have such a large crowd, there's some delay in the recording of the votes. So I'm going to allow a little extra time for voting. If you see the, well, you can press the button more than once, but it will only record your vote once. This is in Chicago. But if you see the "okay" in the screen, you know that your vote has been counted. So it's been moved and seconded, Article 2-3. Voting is now open. I'll be closing voting soon. Voting is now closed. The vote is 421 aye, 27 nay. The article passes, and I so declare. Article 2-4. Capital expenditures. I recognize John McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe just took us through the budget, but I will actually read the motion, and I will repeat the individual line items. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $1,110,788 from free cash to fund the following purchases and projects identified in the fiscal year 2025 capital project book, which is set forth in the, in Appendix D. First item, a DPW snow blower and attachment, $210,000. DPW Chevy 2500 pickup truck. DPW GMC dump truck.
Would you please just read the number, Mr. McGrath?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The DPW snow blower with attachment, $210,000. The DPW Chevy 2500 pickup truck, $80,200. The DPW GMC dump truck, $95,000. The DPW International Sander, $220,000. Facilities, public safety building, HVAC upgrade, $50,000. Facilities fuel, canopy fire suppression, $167,000. Recreation HVAC replacement, $163,125. The library exterior paint and shingle repair, $55,463. And the police SUV cruiser, $70,000. Secondly, transfer $250,000 from overlay reserve to fund the highway roads and sidewalk repair, including all incidental and related costs as set forth in Appendix D of the 2024 Appendix Book.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Mr. McGrath.
As Joe mentioned, and as I just mentioned a few minutes ago, all of these items were reviewed with the department heads and with the capital committee. It's a separate group of citizens who have stepped up and assist Joe in taking all he asks and narrowing them down to a crisp set of projects that we want to put in the budget this year. So it was a citizens committee, as well as FinCon reviewing items, the town manager, and the Select Board. So the FinCon recommends approval of this, of this menu of items for the current FY25 budget.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, would you please come to the... Sir, if you, you need to come to a microphone if you had a question.
It's not important. I was thinking about the International Sander. Was there a domestic one available?
International's the name of the manufacturer. They're, they're a US company.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll move to a vote. I won't reread the numbers, but they're on the screen here. I'll allow a minute for voting. Voting is now open. We're approaching the end of voting. Voting is now closed. The vote is 406 yea, 28 nay. The article passes, and I so declare. Article 2-9, Stabilization Fund. I recognize Christina Shank-Hargrove.
I move that the town transfer the sum of $82,781 from pre-cash to the General Stabilization Fund.
Is there a second? This is Shank-Hargrove.
This is a little bit of a housekeeping matter in that it moves cash into what we call the Stabilization Fund, where it is available for either unexpected, large, or one-time expenses. It's not in the consent agenda because it does require a supermajority vote.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we can move to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. Once again, I'll allow a minute for voting. Voting is now open. I'll be closing voting in 20 seconds. I've closed voting. Can we have the totals, please? It was ayes, 418 nays. 408 nays, 19. Although the screen shows majority vote. Two-thirds is required. I declare that it was more than two-thirds. The article passes, and I so declare. Article 2-10, Capital Stabilization Fund. I recognize Christina Shank-Hargrove.
I move that the town transfer the sum of $235,000 from free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Is there a second? Does Shank-Hargrove?
This is similar to the prior article. This is specifically for a capital stabilization fund, moving cash into that according to our policies in the case of a large or unexpected capital expense.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Once again, this requires a two-thirds vote. Voting, leave voting open for a minute. Starting now. 20 seconds to the end of voting. Voting is now closed.
Mr. Moderator, some of the voters are not saying okay before you're closing the vote. Is that a concern?
Um, well...
Votes are still continuing to come in when you close the vote. And it's not because they're not being clicked.
We have extra clicker.
We replaced the clickers already once.
Okay, I, if, if someone has not registered "okay" when I, when the minute is up, I'll, in this case, I'll allow someone like you to call it out, and we'll address it. allow someone like you to call it out, and we'll address it. The vote is three eighty-two, yea; twenty-one, nay. More than two-thirds. The article passes, and I so declare. Thank you. Senator Tarr is here, and while he missed Woodstock, he is here to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members of town meeting. It's great to be here with all of you today, and I bring greetings from the town of Rockport that released me from their town meeting approximately fifteen minutes ago. I know there are law enforcement present, so I will not speak to my mode of transportation in getting here at that time, but I am delighted to be here with all of you today, and I want to thank and congratulate everyone for coming out to make important decisions on behalf of the town. And, Mr. Moderator, I know my colleague, Representative Kastner, had the opportunity to present a couple of congratulations to some folks that have served us for a lengthy period of time, and I am happy to have the opportunity to do that here today. And, Mr. Moderator, my first citation, and the first person I'd like to recognize, is Frederick Mitchell from the planning board, and if you could join me at the microphone, I would be delighted to do that. So clearly, one of the things that's central to any town is having sound planning that maintains the character of the community, makes sure it's able to meet the needs that it has for things like housing and transportation, and make sure that those things are properly served by other utilities. And planning is an essential function, and I would say it's not always the most glamorous of functions, but it is one that is critical, and it requires attention to detail and commitment to the future of the community. And to do that for twenty-two years is absolutely amazing, and you look relatively calm for having done that for all those years, but I'm pleased to present you with a citation that reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Frederick Mitchell of the planning board in recognition of your twenty-two years of dedicated and committed service to the town of Hamilton. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success now that you have a little free time." And that the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by our clerk. And this is signed by our Senate President, Karen Spilka, attested to by our clerk, Michael Hurley, and I'm proud to offer it on April sixth of 2024 with tremendous appreciation and congratulations for twenty-two years of being focused on this town, being planned appropriately, and being able to move forward into the future appropriately. Congratulations. And next, I'm also pleased to be able to come and recognize Sean for his years on the select board, and I think we get a little bit of hint as to what his future might look like by what he's wearing around his neck. I'm not sure that he isn't going to leave town meeting and go somewhere to a Pacific island, and hopefully, hopefully after that respite, he'll be back again. But Sean, I want to thank and congratulate you for your years serving on the select board. You have been an incredibly dedicated person and an advocate for this community. You've been resourceful, respectful, and you've always tried to confront the issues directly and find solutions and try to find a way to move forward even when there are differing opinions. And I personally want to thank you for your advice and counsel on municipal issues and for the partnership that we've had to try to make sure that the state appropriately recognizes the needs of this community and responds to them. And you have been extraordinary in that role, and so wherever those leaves around your neck take you, I wish you the very best, but want you to know that I will always appreciate our partnership and the time that we've spent together in the service of this community. So I ask you to join me up at the microphone as well. So, this is language that you've heard before. I did say at an earlier town meeting that oftentimes when we present these, the recipient will shake the citation to see if a check from the state will fall out, but I assure you that's not going to happen this morning. But again, this is an official citation. It reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Sean Farrell, select board member, in recognition of your nine years of dedicated and committed service to the town of Hamilton. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by our clerk. This is signed by our Senate President, Karen Spilka, attested to by our clerk, Michael Hurley, and I'm very proud to offer it to a tremendous public servant and someone who has always put the interests of this town first, and he certainly has made an impact as a result of that perspective and that mode of operating. So this is dated April sixth of 2024. Sean, congratulations." Mr. Moderator, I'll do the hardest thing for me, which is to relinquish a microphone with an audience in front of it, but not before I thank you all once again for everyone's role here today in making sure that Hamilton is properly guided and it has an inclusive decision-making process. It is tremendous to see this many people at a town meeting. You're to be congratulated. Thank you all very much.
Thanks very much, Senator. Article two dash eleven, Town Center Comprehensive Plan. I recognize Bill Olson.
I move that the town approve Article two dash eleven as printed in the warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
So, thank you for coming out here to vote on this article today and hard to follow that presentation, but this article is really about funding a comprehensive plan for town center. We define town center as a half-mile from our MBTA station. Why is it important? And why does the select board vote in favor of this? Well, really, two reasons. One is that we are identified as an MBTA community, which means that we have a train station in town, and we have lay-in within a half-mile of that train station. And the state has passed a new three-A zoning bylaw, which allows towns like us to promote more housing density near our town center, near the train station. Number two is that we have property that's going to become available near our town center, i.e. potentially Winthrop School Site. So, we've decided it's in the best interest of our town to bring in consultants and experts to really educate us, what the law is for zoning three-A, what our options are, and then build consensus among the community, train us, educate us, get outreach going, and be able to make a decision as a town, build consensus in the best interest of what we can do here. So, we're in favor of this article, and I think Rick Mitchell also wants to speak on this opportunity.
Thank you. I recognize Rick Mitchell.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much to the Senator. I think what I've learned in twenty-two years of service on the planning board is the benefits of a good, strong, single-malt Scotch after a meeting. No, it's been a real honor, and I really appreciate it. So, as Bill mentioned, this is really, it's been proposed for really three reasons. This article will fund an intensive twelve-month process to develop a form-based code zoning for the downtown district and adjacent properties within a one-half mile from the MBTA commuter rail station. Why is this being proposed? Well, there are three reasons. It's really about taking control of the future for our town as opposed to it being imposed by the state, and we want to carefully shape the future of our downtown. Currently, the downtown business district lacks enforceable design standards, provides for a coherent, small-town look and feel to future development of the downtown, and it will support good planning and a predictable look and feel for future new development in the town. And if you... A little bit about the three-A. This map here shows the half-mile circle. This is mandated by Chapter forty A, Section three-A, the state law, which is to promote housing in transit-oriented districts. Now, this law is mandating that communities adopt the zoning that will allow up to fifteen units per acre of multifamily housing as a right. Now, this is allows, it doesn't mandate, so I think that's an important distinction. Doesn't mean that it will happen, but it means that we do have to adopt that by state law. So, the zoning that we're talking about would be in the white area that's shown there, and that's really the downtown business district, and it includes the Winthrop School Site and the public safety area around there. Now, this law was, we were supposed to have adopted by the end of this year. We have submitted a preliminary plan, but we will not adopt it, and I don't think we should adopt it until we've had a chance to actually take the steps necessary to go through a very public process and hopefully adopt form-based zoning that will very carefully control the layout, design, and feel of any future development that might occur within that district. We also think this arms us with the capability of going to the state and say, hey, look, we're not fighting this, but we're not going to adopt it until we've gone through a very intensive public process to have a discussion with the public about this and what it might look like if any development does occur within this half-mile district. And, excuse me for a second. As I mentioned, we have done this, and we have done this with the state and look forward to engaging and with the support of Christine Kastner and Senator Tarr. We'll be intending to meet with the state and talk about our plans to move forward, so that hopefully next year at this time, we'll have a zoning bylaw that we've built consensus around, and people will feel comfortable adopting and also adopting the three-A. And I'm actually representing the Hamilton Development Corporation here as well, who will be contributing an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to this effort since it does include the downtown business district. So I really encourage your support of this, to take control of the future for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any questions or comments? No questions or comments. We can move to a vote. This vote is to authorize the expenditure of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to fund a town comprehensive, town center comprehensive plan. I'm going to leave voting open for two minutes, as we're told that the system is still a little slow. So, voting is open now. Maybe I should ask the young man to come back and play some more. About thirty seconds left. Thirty seconds left. We're getting there. Voting is now closed. I apologize for those who are having trouble with their clickers, but the vote is four twenty-six, yea; fifty, nay. The article passes, and I so declare. Article two dash thirteen, Community Preservation Affordable Housing Trust. I recognize Jay Butler.
Jay Butler, seventy-eight Old Cotton Road, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I move that the town approve Article two dash thirteen as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
This grant request from the Affordable Housing Trust is planned to be used to fund in part the construction of Asbury Commons, an approved forty-B affordable housing development at four sixty-six Asbury Street, adjacent to the village at Canterbury Farm. This project consists of a three-story building situated on approximately four acres, consisting of forty-five affordable apartments in a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms open to families and seniors. This development will increase Hamilton's subsidized housing inventory, SHI, from four-point-oh-seven percent to five-point-six percent against the goal of ten percent. Eligibility for renting is limited to those families at or below sixty percent of the annualized median income, AMI, with seventy percent of the apartments set aside for local preference. This CPA grant of five hundred thousand will be combined with two-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the Affordable Housing Trust and be given to Harborlight Homes, who will utilize this money to help them to raise the balance of funds for this twenty-eight-million-dollar project. Construction is proposed to start in mid-2025 and finish in March 2026, with occupancy by September 2026. Harborlight Homes will act as developer, long-term owner, and onsite manager of the property via resident service coordinator. Thank you.
You may have said, Mr. Butler, but was there a report from the CPC on this?
Yes, the CPC voted unanimously to support this, as did the select board and the FINCO.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? If not, we can move to a vote. This requires a majority vote. Again, I will open the voting for two minutes. Voting is open now. Voting is open now. 20 seconds left. Voting is now closed. The vote is 380, 380, 40 yay, 91 nay. The article passes, and I so declare. Article 2-14, Community Preservation Housing Production Plan. I recognize Jay Butler.
I move that the town approve Article 2-14 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Mr. Butler.
This 40K community housing grant request from Patrick Reford, Director of Planning and Inspections, is for the purpose of hiring a consultant to develop the state-required 2025 update of the Hamilton Housing Production Plan, a state-recognized five-year strategic plan. This plan provides guidance for housing productions to meet our housing needs, with a focus on meeting the needs of low-income and moderate-income households. It is also designed to help us satisfy the state's goal as at least 10% of our housing to be affordable. The Select Board, the FinCom, and the CPC have all voted unanimously in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Are there any questions or comments? Please identify yourself and street address.
Jenny Beauregard, 50, Hamilton Ave. I was just wondering, will this group or plan work in coordination with the Town Center Comprehensive Plan that we just authorized? Because they seem to be an overlapping Venn diagram here. Regarding housing within half a mile of the MBTA.
Mr. Develops, do you want to address that?
So the 3A zoning is a separate state regulation. It's relatively new, and that's why we still haven't adopted zoning to comply with it. So that's why we're going through that process. The Housing Production Plan is something that we do every five years. So we have one right now that's active, and it basically helps us state where our housing situation is, what our process is for trying to move the time towards 10% affordable. I'm sure that one will inform the other, but they won't necessarily be, like, all mingled up together. We hire a separate consultant that just does housing production plans to focus on that aspect of things for us. But I'm sure they'll talk to each other.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move to a vote. Again, I'll allow two minutes for voting. Voting is now open. 30 seconds left. Voting is now closed. The vote is 400 yay, 74 nay. The article passes, and I so declare. Article 2-15, Community Preservation Antique Fire Truck. I recognize Jay Butler.
I move that the town approve Article 2-15 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Mr. Butler.
This historic preservation CPA grant request for $150,000 is from the Hamilton Fire Chief Ray Burnett for the construction of a climate-controlled building to house the 1916 Model T American Le France Chemical One fire truck. The garage that previously held this vehicle was demolished when the Public Safety Building was built, but due to lack of funds, was never rebuilt. This vehicle, the first motorized fire truck purchased by the fire department in 2016, has been completely restored by former firefighter Randy Ayer. Randy not only restored the vehicle, but set aside funds to pay for continued maintenance of the building and the vehicle. This project previously received a CPA grant in 2007, but that was withdrawn in 2014 after no activity on the project for several years. This project now has the focus of Chief Ray Burnett and contributions from several individuals to make it a reality by 2025. This building would be located on Grass Island in front of the Public Safety Building to allow public building. The Select Board, FinCom, and CPC all unanimously approve this grant. And Chief Burnett's here if you have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Are there any questions or comments? If not, we can move to a vote. Once again, this requires a majority vote, and I will allow two minutes for voting. Starting now. 30 seconds to the end of voting. Voting is over. The vote is 324 yay, 127 nay. The article passes, and I so declare. Article 3-1, Resolution State Flag and Seal. I recognize Jamie Knudsen.
I move that the town approve Article 3-1 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Knudsen.
This was a request that was initiated by the Hamilton Human Rights Commission, which is a commission that's part of town government, not, everybody knows about it in Hamilton, but... And I really want to thank you for giving us a few minutes of your time today to consider the flag, the seal, and the motto of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Our state symbol, which you see here up on the screen, has changed many times over the centuries. And now, the Commonwealth is undertaking a review of the state symbol for the first time in 140 years. Hamilton is being asked today to weigh in on this topic, and it is very important that we do so. Because every town is asked to fly this flag. Every town is told to teach this symbol to your young grade school students as part of the core curriculum in the elementary schools. And you can see that we have the flag cloned here today. So Hamilton's voice will be very important on this issue. If you, and I know that it's difficult to see what's up there, but if you look at the small oval image in the top right corner, this is what the original seal of Massachusetts looked like in 1629, when the Massachusetts Bay Company was founded. This was their seal even a year before the colonists sailed across the Atlantic to what was then known as Shawmin, and what we now call Boston Harbor in 1630. The image you see here is of an indigenous man wearing a loincloth of leaves, carrying one downward-pointed arrow with a speech balloon coming out of his mouth saying, quote, "Come over and help us." Now, if you look at the main image on that, that is the current seal and flag. After many changes over the years, in 1898, this image was adopted as the flag and seal of Massachusetts, the one we are voting about today. And as you can see, the indigenous figure is still present in the center of our seal, holding one downward-pointed arrow with no quiver on his shoulder. This is not the image of an indigenous figure ready for battle. This is meant to signify a pacified or peaceful native person. Now, the speech balloon is not there, and has been replaced at the top by the image of a settler's hand holding a colonial broadsword. The Latin motto at the bottom is commonly translated, quote, "She seeks a quiet peace under the sword, but peace with liberty." The facial features were taken from the photograph of a Chippewa chief from Montana, whom the illustrator Edmund Garrett considered, quote, "A fine specimen of an Indian," close quote. The bow in the native person's right hand was sketched from the bow taken from a native person who was shot and killed in Sudbury in 1665 by a settler named William Goodno. And the belt is patterned after the belt worn by the Wampanoag leader named Medecoma, whom the English named King Philip before they killed him in battle. The sword at the top was copied from the sword of Miles Stanish, who used it in ambush against the native people. The tribal nations of Massachusetts remember this sword and how it was used against them. Native leaders of Massachusetts have been calling on us to change this image, which they view justly as a memorialization of past violence, of the sword used against them to dispossess them of their lands and lifeways. For 50-plus years, native leaders of Massachusetts have been calling for this symbol to be changed. Our state legislator has been considering this matter for the last 40 years. In 2021, the former governor Charlie Baker appointed a special commission to review the history and meaning of our flag and seal, the symbol you see here on the screen. And for the first time in 400 years, after using their imagery without their permission or consent, six native leaders of tribal nations in the Commonwealth were invited to sit at the table with state legislators, historians, arts, and tourism leaders, and the representatives of the Secretary of State, and to consult on this. And that special commission wrapped up its work just last November, after the 19-member panel voted unanimously in May of 2022 to call for a totally revised flag, seal, and motto. The special commission said this symbol can easily be interpreted as, and I quote, "A celebration of the history of violence perpetrated by settlers against indigenous populations," close quote. The special commission said this symbol is causing harm today. Now, the town of Hamilton is being asked to show support for the indigenous leaders who served on that special commission and to support their colleagues and to join in this historic review along with 79 other cities and towns in Massachusetts that have already taken formal votes of changing the flag and seal. The Hamilton Human Rights Commission, with the unanimous support of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, asked you to vote yes for a new flag, a new inspirational and inclusive symbol that may show peace and harmony between all people who now call Massachusetts their home, a symbol we can all be proud of and to teach our children. Again, I sincerely thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Are there any questions or comments? If not, we can move to a vote. This requires a majority vote. Again, I'll allow two minutes for voting. Voting is now open. Thirty seconds. Voting is now closed. The vote is three hundred and ninety, yea, one hundred and two, nay. The article passes, and I so declare. Article three dash three, citizens petition, resolution on use of artificial turf at Hamilton-Wenton Regional School District Athletic Fields Project. I recognize Bill Shields.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to approve Article three dash three as printed in the warrant book.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good morning. I'm Bill Shields. I live at 721 Bay Road, Hamilton. I'm a former member of the Conservation Commission, the Governmental Study Committee, and for 23 years I served as Town Council for the town of Hamilton. I've lived next door to the high school for more than 50 years. Let me begin with just two quick issues of procedure, and then I'll move to the substance of the petition. First, the proponents of this article and the next two articles propose one presentation, so that we don't have to go through this again and again. We expect to do this for approximately 10, 12, 13 minutes max, and I'm going to be joined by my colleague Anne Giroux, who will talk right after I will. So, we would ask your indulgence that our presentation be the presentation under the next two articles in addition to this article. The second thing I would suggest is that we had planned to present an expert today, Dr. Kyla Bennett. She is one of the most knowledgeable people in the country on the issues of artificial turf. She couldn't be here, and the moderator's ruled that because she can't be here and can't be questioned, that her video and her presence will not be here. The reason she can't be questioned is because we are not set up to do Zoom in the auditorium here at the Hamilton-Wenton High School. If we had been able to do Zoom and we had the proper equipment, she would be here. You would have seen her video, or you would have seen her and be entitled to question her. Many of you have seen her video. It's been up on various sites around town. Okay, the substance of why we're here. After last year's town meeting, it became clear to many people in town that the $15 million school athletic improvement project would need the installation of not one, but three artificial turf fields comprising more than five acres of plastic grass. In a town which does not permit plastic bags, the five-plus acres would use the equivalent of just under 10 million plastic bags out back behind the high school. It also became clear that artificial turf is being scrutinized across the country for health, environmental, liability concerns, and the verdict is not good for artificial turf. Bottom line, it's become crystal clear that artificial turf is dangerous to human beings and to the environment. I recall last year the Finance Committee voted no on this article to fund the high school project, because they said the project had not been vetted properly, and I believe they were right. In fact, last year's town meeting was not given important information about artificial turf. Specifically, the town was not told that an artificial turf field has a useful life of between six and 10 years, at which time it must be ripped up, disposed of, replaced. Five-plus acres of ripout and replacement sometime in the mid-2030s if the project goes forward. Importantly, the town was not told that there is no available process for recycling artificial turf. Currently, it is discarded, it goes into landfill, or worse, it gets incinerated. The town was not told that in 2019 it was discovered that all, all artificial turf contains per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, now known to the world as forever chemicals or PFOS. The town was not told that other state cities and towns have either banned or placed moratoriums on artificial turf because of its dangers. For example, Concord, Wayland, Sharon, all have three-year moratorium. New York State has banned it outright. California has given every town and city the option to ban artificial turf. The town was not told that there are bills before our legislature that would ban artificial turf and products containing PFOS, and that those bills are receiving favorable attention. The town was not told that microplastics from artificial turf are polluting our wetlands, our rivers, our oceans, our water supply. In short, the town was not told that the science of artificial turf and the dangers of its forever chemicals has developed quickly and ominously. So, why citizens petitions? Originally, we went last December to the school committee and said, "Look what we found over the last months. Here is a, here is a group of information that we think you want to know, you want to reconsider, you want to take a look at this issue again in light of the current posture of science." They wouldn't put us on the agenda. They said, "No, that would be water over the dam, this project is going forward, and we think to discuss it again would be an error, maybe show an error in our ways, maybe not." So, what did we do? We went to citizens time for three minutes, three minutes we were allowed, to pose the issues about artificial turf, and we gave the school committee a deck of 20 pages with references of everything that we had found to that date. They not only didn't respond, they didn't get back to us, we've heard nothing from the school committee since. So, what do you do when you have that kind of a situation? We have in this Commonwealth, and always have had, citizens petitions, which allow you to consider what your town officials are not considering, and to bring it to the vote of the voters of the town, you. You're going to make this decision today, and that's exactly the way it should be. Importantly, I want to start off, the last part of what I'm going to say, by saying that it's important to understand what these petitions do not do. The petitions do not stop the school athletic improvements project. They don't stop it. They do not remove $1 of funding that you voted last year for the school project. What they do do is to take each of these three petitions, take the position of sending a message to the school committee, the first article, this one, three-three, that the town does not want artificial turf. Secondly, it says, "Take a timeout before it's too late. See where regulation is going. See where artificial turf stands in a year's, or two years, or three years' time. Don't give us five acres of toxic waste, and don't tell us that we have to pay for it without having the town voted really clearly on whether we want that." Please hear three or four quotes, and then we'll quit. One, the Conservation Law Foundation, one of the most respected advocacy environmental units in the state, has said outright, "Artificial turf is toxic to humans and the environment." Our Ipswich River Watershed Association, addressing the Hamilton situation, said, "We urge any artificial turf be PFOS-free to avoid potential downstream impacts, including the Ipswich River and drinking water wells." The Hamilton Board of Health said, "We urge the school committee to strongly consider the Board of Health's position, that the new athletic facility should be designed and built without PFOS in any component, as confirmed with the most sensitive PFOS testing available." The Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee decided this week unanimously, a five-member board, to recommend the selectmen unanimously, they suggested support of these three petitions. That's the Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee. So, lastly, we've been told that the project is underway, and that we can't stop it. It is not underway. The project hasn't even completed the permitting process yet. We asked the superintendent in February for copies of the contract, for copies of the specs, for copies of the contract documents. We were told by the superintendent specifically, "There are no such documents responsive to your request." That was at the end of February, six weeks ago. We don't have contract documents. Now, what does that mean to you, and what does it mean to me? As a result, the project has not begun, and no one knows the absolute basics of the project. What turf is specified? No one knows. How will it be tested? No one knows. How will it be shown not to have PFOS? How will it be replaced? At whose expense? Who will defend and indemnify the town when it is sued, when there is liability? What warranties are we going to demand? Basic stuff of a contract. This project is not underway. In conclusion, we've seen the signs all around town. Our group says, "Protect the kids and the environment." The other signs in town say, "Protect the project." What is the project? The project is a thing. The project is artificial turf. So, I urge you to cast three votes, three yes votes, to this petition, this Article three-three, yes vote to three-four, yes vote to three-five. This is the time to make a decision that will impact all of us, and your decision will be the right one for the town of Hamilton. I'm sure of that. So, thank you. I would ask the moderator to recognize Anne Giroux for a brief...
Aye, yes, Ms. Giroux. Thank you, Mr. Giroux.
Hi, my name is Anne Giroux. I live at 821 Bay Road, and I'm an voter to the high school. And what I wanted to speak to you about today is just a few of the issues that have come up in this debate about grass versus artificial turf. There are issues that have come up as I've been talking to people and that I've seen on Facebook. The first one is, "But will grass really work in Hamilton?" And I have some slides. We've got one up, okay. As background on this topic, I think you really need to go back to the 2015 GALE Associates Report. They were a consultant hired by the school district to look at our fields. They did, and they recommended artificial turf fields. And that recommendation was based on two things. GALE Associates told us that grass fields cannot get more than 400 to 500 hours of play a year, and they also said that a grass field needs to rest for 30 to 45 hours per year. The problem is both of those things are wrong. And the source of my information is twofold. The first is the University of Lowell. They have a group in Lowell called the Toxic Use Reduction Institute, or TURI, as they call themselves. TURI did a number of case studies a few years ago of various grass fields in Massachusetts, Ohio, and Pennsylvania, and TURI concluded from those case studies that a well-maintained grass field can get over 1,000 hours of use a year. I also spoke to a turf expert. I spoke to an individual by the name of Scott Bills. He's with an organization called Sports Field Solutions, and he flies around the country. He works for municipalities and school districts and universities, and he looks and inspects athletic fields, and he comes up with recommendations on what needs to be done to renovate, or improve, or maintain them in order to increase their safety and their playability. And I spoke to this expert, and I said, "If you have a high school playing field that is well-constructed and well-maintained, how many hours should we be able to get from that field?" And his response was 1,200 to 1,300 playing hours a year. Now, when you look at what Hamilton is showing for the hours for its fields, and these numbers come from the 2015 GALE Associates Report, so they're a little bit old, but these are the numbers that were shown to the planning board just two months ago as why Hamilton needed artificial turf fields. If you look at these numbers, the, I don't know how well you can see them, but the football field was getting 260 hours of play a year, the baseball field 248, and those baseball field numbers include both spring and summer Babe Ruth play. The softball field, 712 hours of use. Those 712 hours of use include Little League play, it includes middle school recess every day, and it includes the middle school phys ed. Field one, which is the one the furthest back, 554 hours. Field two, the next one in, 648, and what they call Field three, which is just beyond the baseball outfield, is getting, was getting 410 hours of use. All of these numbers are well below what we've been shown is feasible. Now, what do we need to do to actually get that kind of usage out of a grass field? Lori, if you could go to the next slide? In order to achieve that kind of play on a grass field, you need to aerate it four to six times a year. You need to overseed it four or more times a year, and probably more times a year on those areas that get a lot of wear. They need to be watered and fertilized on a regular basis, and people in Hamilton have said to me, "But we can't water artificial turf, we can't water the natural grass here because we have water bans." And that's wrong, because state law says that you can water athletic fields even during local watering bans. You also need to, in the wintertime, cover them with winter blankets. Those are the things that you see on golf courses, on the greens in the wintertime. It's what they put at iron rail on the areas that get a lot of wear. If you do all these things, the TURI case studies, as well as the turf expert I spoke to, were quite clear, you don't need the rest periods that we've been told, because what you do is you keep the grass going constantly. The turf expert that I spoke to also pointed out that you can take a soccer field, and about 30% of that soccer field really gets heavy wear. You can re-saw that 30% every year, and it's still cheaper than putting in an artificial turf field. I've also heard, "Well, the other playing fields in the rest of town, they're in poor condition, so we want to bring more activity onto the high school fields." Well, one, there's room for more hours at the high school, but the other thing is, we really should be maintaining all of our grass fields in town. We should be maintaining them to the extent that we need to for the type of play we want to put on those fields. Now, another issue that people have talked about a lot, and it goes to playability, is what about the wet conditions? And it's true, in the springtime, we have a cold, wet spring here in New England. Both artificial turf and natural grass, you're not supposed to play on them when it rains. So, the issue is how quickly can you bring play back onto those fields? TURI did a case study, they looked at Denison University out in Ohio. It has a football field that has pretty good drainage. They bring play back onto that field an hour after the rainstorm, and they can do that because they have really good drainage. We don't. If you look at what GALE Associates wrote in 2015 about our fields, they said we had severely outdated drainage, overly compacted soils, lack of subsurface drainage. Our fields just don't drain. But you know what? We need better drainage, and artificial turf needs drainage as well. If you don't put a sophisticated drainage system in with artificial turf, you can't play on it either. If you look at the current budget estimate for the turf fields, they have a line item for drainage, and for the three fields, the three proposed artificial turf fields, that line item for drainage is $325,000. So, we're going to put in a drainage system of more than $100,000 for each of those fields. I would submit to you that if we put in that much money into a drainage system for those grass fields, we could get back on and play much quicker than we've been able to do recently. We won't be able to get back as quickly as on artificial turf, I grant that, but it would be much better than the conditions that we have today. The other thing I hear a lot about is PFOS are everywhere, I'm really not concerned. Well, PFOS are everywhere, and you should be concerned. Other people are concerned, the EPA is concerned, and the EPA is proposing new regulations for PFOS in drinking water. People believe those regulations will be coming out next week. They dramatically lower the amount of PFOS that we're allowed to have in our drinking water, and even the EPA has said on some of these compounds, they'd go even lower, but we're not even able to test that low. EPA wants to get it out of our drinking water. When these new regulations come out, many municipalities in Massachusetts are going to be in violation and are going to have to spend a fair amount of money to clean out their drinking water. drinking water. We also have legislation in Massachusetts that's pending to get PFAS out of cookware and textiles and cosmetics. Rep. Kaczner, I know, has supported it. Over 50% of our legislators have supported that bill so far, and people believe it will pass. So a lot of energy is going into getting PFAS out of our environment because it's simply not good. We need to turn off the tap. We shouldn't be adding more PFAS in. GALE Associates, again, the consultant to the school district, has said, well, there's background levels of PFAS. PFAS is already in the ground. It doesn't really matter. Well, one, we don't know what the levels of PFAS are behind the high school, if any. Two, there's definitely PFAS in artificial turf. As Bill said, PFAS are the forever chemicals. They last forever. If you put artificial turf in, it will have PFAS. Those PFAS have been shown will leach off that field. They'll go into the groundwater. They'll go into the wetlands and the Miles River. Whenever you put more PFAS in, it's additive because they don't go away. So we need to be turning off the tap, not putting more in. The final point that I want to address that people have talked about is, well, other towns have artificial turf fields. We should have one too. And I don't think that's the right analysis. PFAS were only discovered five years ago, and what we're learning about PFAS and the danger of PFAS has been developing quite rapidly. So towns that were putting in fields five and 10 years ago, they didn't have the knowledge that we have today. And I take as an example Manchester. I have family in Manchester. I keep up what's going on there. Manchester put in two artificial turf fields a little over 10 years ago. Just last summer, they had to resurface them. Next to the high school, about 100 yards away from the football field, the artificial turf field, is one of their drinking water wells, the Lincoln Street Well. That well is currently contaminated with PFAS. When these new EPA regulations come in, Manchester's going to be in violation of that with respect to the Lincoln Street Well. That well supplies over 50% of the water in Manchester, and the DPW director is on record saying Manchester's going to have to spend about $10 million to clean up that well. So Manchester made a decision. When you go back and look at how they made their decision, they were told by Weston and Sampson, an engineering company at the time, that the grass fields could only get 200 hours of play per year, and they needed that 30 to 45-day resting period. We're looking back at it now in retrospect. It doesn't look like it was the greatest decision for them to make. And what we're asking today is to make a decision for Hamilton today, based on what we know today, what we know about the facts, what we know about the science, what we know about artificial turf, the PFAS, the microplastics, the injury rates, and the cost, and what we think we can realistically achieve for grass fields. Are we going to commit resources to actually maintain them, put drainage under them, et cetera, so that we can get the best use and time and play out of the grass fields as possible? So I just encourage you all to listen to what we talked about today. And again, we have to make the best decision for Hamilton, the environment, and our athletes. Thank you.
We're now open for questions and comments. What? Oh, you want to speak? Okay. Okay. I will first recognize Bill Olson of the Select Board.
Good morning again. Bill Olson, 419 Highland...
And just again, to remind folks, if folks are in the overflow room, you need to come into this auditorium if you wish to address town needing. Thank you. Mr. Olson.
Good morning, Bill Olson, 419 Highland Street, member of the Select Board. Just want to state, obviously, that the Select Board unanimously supports the athletic field as currently designed. And, you know, we support our schools, support our kids. We've worked really diligently over many, many years with the community to come up with a decision that we think balances the best interests of our environment, our town, and our children. And we think it's irresponsible at this point to really rewind, unwind what we have done and what we worked really hard to accomplish. So we're asking you to please reject the amendments so we can finish the project on time and stop wasting our time and money fighting amongst ourselves and spending money to rent other schools' fields. So please reject these amendments and we can move forward with the project. Thank you.
Please, I understand that people have strong views, but I think, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, just to be fair, let's hold our background comments. Mr. Gardo.
Mr. Moderator, could I ask if Town Council's had an opportunity to review these citizens' petitions, and if so, whether he could offer his opinions as to enforceability and other matters? Thank you.
I recognize Town Council, Tom McInity.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In response to the speaker, we did take a look at all three citizens' petitioned articles. Article 3-3, which is the first article which has been moved in before you ring now, is a non-binding referendum question. It simply seeks a sense of this particular town meeting to determine whether the folks who are here voting today support the use of artificial turf field or not. It has no binding effect. Simply a sense of a meeting in response to a referendum question. The second article, 3-4, is, in our view, problematic. As you may recall, the original vote that was taken under this article in 2023 at the annual town meeting was specifically to approve a vote taken by the Regional School District Committee to authorize a debt. So the role of town meeting with respect to this particular issue is set forth in General Law's Chapter 71, Section 16, Subpar Ref. D. And the way the process works with respect to regional school debt is that the Regional School District Committee votes to incur a debt for, among other purposes, which is set forth in the statute, to make improvements to outdoor playgrounds, athletic or recreation facilities, and related planning, engineering, or architectural costs. Once the Regional School District Committee votes to authorize the debt, written notice of the amount of the debt and the general purposes for which the debt was authorized is given to the member towns in the district. No debt may be incurred by the Regional School District until 60 days has passed. During that 60-day time period, member towns have the ability to hold town meetings for the purposes of either approving or disapproving that particular debt that was, again, authorized by the Regional School Committee. In this case, the Regional School Committee voted on February 9th of 2023 to authorize a debt, and town meeting was held last year, the annual town meeting, where this article appeared on the warrant, was on April 1st of 2023, so it was within that 60-day period. The vote that was taken by town meeting in both Hamilton and Wenham on this particular debt authorization was contingent on the passage of a Proposition 2.5 override, which also passed. So this vote passed within that, was approved, the vote that was taken by the Regional School District Committee to incur the debt was approved by both town meetings for Hamilton and Wenham and by the voters on a Proposition 2.5 debt exclusion vote. And the vote on, the town meeting vote took place within that 60-day period. Once that 60-day period has expired, that's it, in my opinion. We have confirmed that with bond council, school district council have all come to the... So you have three different attorneys who essentially came to the same exact opinion. So, under Town Meeting Time, which is the Handbook of Parliamentary Procedure, which governs the conduct of town meetings, there are a number of exceptions when you cannot reconsider or rescind a vote that was previously taken by town meeting. And in this case, it's our opinion that it would fall within that as well. But at the end of the day, the statute provides a 60-day window within which town meeting can act. Town meeting did act within that 60-day window, and now, over a year later, after the 60-day window has closed, it is the opinion of council, specifically, and as well as, perhaps more importantly than my opinion, of bond council, that the window has closed. There is no action that town meeting can take in response to the second one. It would essentially have no valid or any kind of binding effect. With respect to the third, Article 3-5, Article 3-5 seeks to impose a moratorium on the installation and authorization of artificial turf fields on public lands owned by the town, including any land owned or leased by the school district. In my opinion, such a bylaw could be lawful. The Attorney General's Office has, in fact, approved similar bylaws in other communities, as Mr. Shields had indicated. Those include Brookline, Concord, Sharon, and Wayland. And I did take a look specifically at the Wayland bylaw that was passed. I don't recall what the date was, but it's nearly identical to the language that was included in the citizens' petition here. So I will say, however, the project has already been authorized at this point. General bylaws are not retro, they don't apply retroactively. So the project's already been authorized. I was informed today that the bid documents have been prepared and are currently being advertised. So bids are in the process of being solicited, based on what I was informed. So there's certainly a question of enforceability with respect to that third citizens' petition bylaw to impose the moratorium. But as a general proposition, a moratorium bylaw would be validly upheld by the Attorney General's Office. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. One second. I would, thank you, Mr. McInity. I would allow, before we move on to others, if he so chooses, Mr. Shields, to make a brief response on the legal issue solely.
I'm not going to bother the town meeting with a legal argument involving town council or bond council. Suffice it to say, if the vote passes, the vote will stand or it won't stand depending upon its enforceability at a later day. I disagree with town council completely, but I'm not going to bother the town meeting with it now. We suggest go to a vote, and we'll face the issue when it comes up.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Mr. Farrell.
Just quickly, not to reiterate what town council said, but to give you the Cliff Notes version of it, the first article is what we call get a sense of the meeting. It's non-binding, as was mentioned. It's just to get a sense of the room. The second one is to talk about the bonding, et cetera. This one, we've had three different attorneys look at it, and if it passes, there's nothing we can do to enforce it. It's actually illegal because we've already made all the decisions, we've already bonded the money, et cetera. The third article is the one about the moratorium. This one could pass and have an effect, but it most likely won't have an effect on this project because the project will already have been started and going. By the time the AG reviews it and gets back to us, the project will be well underway. So it will, if it passes, have a moratorium on any further turf fields for the next three years, just to clarify that for everybody in a simple word.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Okay, we'll move on. Ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kathy Saint Pierre, 743 Bay Road. And just my three minutes are running, so when the school committee members gratefully accepted their seat on the committee, they were honor-bound by a list of regulations created by their own committee. And of those is one that states they are to make decisions that do not have an adverse impact on the environment. I think scientific data, as recently as this year, in the New England Journal of Medicine, basically says that it is impossible to have artificial turf that does not have an adverse effect on people exposed to it. The second item is that they are honor-bound to protect students' health and well-being. And I don't understand how ethically and morally you can choose to put something that has known health and environmental effects over school property.
Ma'am, you're sailing rather close to personal attacks, which are not allowed.
Okay, I apologize. I guess I'll say that it is my hope that when we take bids for this project, we include professional grass athletic field companies to make a bid, and that the cost analysis for both artificial turf and natural grass includes 10-year costs, because it looks like the cost for artificial turf exceeds what's been presented before if you include the million-dollar cost to replace those fields if they're replaceable in eight years. So I just ask that that is thrown in for consideration when bids for this athletic field project is put forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ma'am, did you speak before on this article?
Not on this one.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm getting a little, I just, we want everyone to have an opportunity to speak, but, you know, so go ahead.
Jenny Beauregard, 50, Hamilton Avenue. And actually, that was a great segue to my practical question for Eric Tracy. I was wondering, since there's a known expiration date for the turf fields, assuming the project goes forward with turf fields, will the budgets in years, say the expiration date is year 10, will the budgets for years 1 through 9 include the disposal and replacement costs amortized? So we won't have a big ask in year 10 for the replacement, like budgeting, will that be included going forward?
That's fine. Just going forward, all comments are supposed to go through the moderator. It's okay.
Mr. Moderator, could you ask Mr. Tracy that question?
Fine, we just, I know. It may seem, you know, a bit, how many angels can dance on the pin if there are angels? But that's the way town meeting time speaks. So, Mr. Tracy, if you had, if you want to answer that question?
Yes, the idea of the budgeting process and the realities of this project have really brought us to think about this in the long term, over the eight-to-14-year cycle of possible turf. The reality is, today, we presented a budget FY '25 with an extra $490,000 that's being moved in the stabilization fund, which is money that can be allotted for that. We are waiting for our final conditions from the planning board, which one of the draft conditions I've seen is something of the effect of having an escrow account, so we would comply with that. I think that's the right way to do it. I think it's important to budget for these things ahead of time so that we're not all of a sudden coming back to the town and saying, oh, we need a million dollars. So being able to do that over time makes sense to us.
Thank you. Sir?
Eric Baum, 22, Martel. I'd like to speak against this. I would like you all to take these two considerations into thought as you make your decision. One, I am a research chemist with over 20 years' experience, 35-plus patents and peer-reviewed articles. I have studied PF, polyfluorinated aromatic and alkyl substances. I have also worked in the agricultural industry. While I applaud the notion that we need to look after everything that could harm the environment, I will say that it is not a settled issue that pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers do not affect the environment or watershed either. So please take that into consideration. The second is, I am a Massachusetts high school soccer ref, and we've talked a lot about the safety of children and the sort of social aspect of children. What I will say is, as a referee, I am called upon to make... What I will say is, as a referee, I am called upon to make determinations as to whether or not a field is safe for play. In all cases, I can say varsity fields are safe for play, whether they're grass or turf. But in most cases, the JV freshman fields are not safe for play. But I also know that those games will not be rescheduled, and so I have to make the hard decision as to whether or not this child will get to play that game or not. So often, we will go ahead with the game, and we'll take it as it comes. But if you don't pass this, we're still putting at least 67% of these programs out because those are the freshman and JV teams, up to 67, I should say. And finally, as a referee with many years' experience, I have experienced more injuries on bad grass fields than turf fields any day. I know it's anecdotal, but take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Michelle Horgan, 141 School Street.
Just hang on a second while we get the --
Thank you. Michelle Horgan, 141 School Street. Mr. Moderator, can I please ask that Superintendent Tracy come back to the podium and just address the comments that were made by Mr. Shields and Ms. Rowe?
I think let's get some more comment, and if he has something to say, I certainly will. But I think I'd like to get some input from --
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Yes, Peter Britton, 466 Highland Street. I've been in business here in Hamilton since the 1980s with the purpose of promoting soil health. And I think that every time I drive down by the field in Wenham and see the beautiful condition at the iron rail field and its grass, how does that happen? It happens, I think, because they have outsourced the condition of that field, the maintenance of that field, to professionals that know how to do this. It's not a Department of Public Works project to be keeping these fields up. And I don't have any problem with finding a figure that would hopefully be under $15 million for maintaining the fields expertly. But I see no reason, given my own experience and what I'm observing there, why you couldn't outsource and have grass fields and make this whole PFAS issue, in effect, go away for the town of Hamilton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Hi, this is Amy Laws, 17 Postgate Road. Just a couple of comments about PFAS. They have been known for several decades. Test methods just started coming out around 2019 or so, so those regulations are in play. The number of chemicals looked at are expanding. But my understanding of turf fields is the majority of the PFAS that was coming from rubber fill, which was not included in what was approved last year. And, Mr. Moderator, if that could be confirmed with Mr. Tracy on what we were actually proposing for fill? My understanding of the grass components is that they're nylon and polypropylene, which are not made with perfluorinated compounds. Yes, they are plastic, but as the gentleman earlier stated, fertilizers also are not necessarily good for the environment either.
Thank you. No?
You want me?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, at the last building committee for the Fields Project, the committee voted to use across all fields the infill known as Brockfill, which is a ground-up pine, organic infill for all of our fields. It has, you know, higher safety ratings and also has the ability to lower the temperatures of the field by up to 30 to 35 degrees.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hello, Kelly Alberts, 6 Settlers Lane. Bear with me, I hate doing these things. I just wanted to come up here because I'm hearing a lot of conjecture, a lot of hearsay. We actually haven't heard from any real experts. It's been, I heard the turf experts say, there was a doctor that once said this to me. We haven't actually heard any experts, so I want to make sure that's clear. By way of background, I have a degree in environmental biology. I actually wrote my honors thesis on campus pesticide usage, so it's near and dear to my heart. I'm also a field hockey player. I played growing up, I played for UMass Amherst, and I played for a team out of Vancouver, B.C., post-college. I have a two-inch scar in the middle of my face and a plate in this portion of my head because the University of Rhode Island has a grass field. I just want to let that resonate for a second. I'm lucky to have vision in my left eye because the University of Rhode Island has a grass field. And this is an NCAA Division I incredibly well-maintained field. It's going to get a divot. Someone's going to fake left and go right, and their cleat's going to dig in, and there's going to be a divot, and that divot is going to cause a bad bounce, and it's going to hit someone. So if we're talking about the safety of athletes, I'm like shaking, this is so nerve-wracking, I'm sorry. If we're talking about the safety of athletes, I think we need to consider all facets of the safety of athletes, and it's incredibly problematic to have people come up who have not played on a grass field tell you what's best for student athletes who are playing in the grass fields, who are playing on turf fields. And I'm not unique in this situation. When I talk about injuries on these grass fields, I've seen so many face stitches, so many black eyes, so many broken noses. It's horrifying what can happen in a field hockey game on a grass field. And the same thing goes for lacrosse, the same thing goes for soccer, because maybe it's not a face injury, but it's a twisted knee, it's a twisted ankle, it's a season off the sport. So I just want to make sure that's incredibly clear to all of you, that this isn't just about the numbers of hours on a field or whatever that stat was. This is about the actual health and safety of students, and that cannot be without a consistent, solid terrain. And you do not get that consistency, that flat terrain in a grass field, you just cannot. No matter how many chemicals you put down, how many deterents you put down to keep the borrowing animals out, you cannot do it. So that's it for me. Thank you.
I'm giving up.
Rob Brown, 82 Blueberry Lane. Just want to just say that the infill, and we've talked about there might be a natural infill, artificial turf is made of infill and an artificial grass, right? And my understanding is that there is no artificial turf that includes the infill and the grass that does not have PFAS. The PFAS is required to extrude the artificial grass, right? And that was clear from the video that was sent out, so I just wanted to remind people of that. One thing I also wanted to say was that I don't think that this petition is actually saying we don't want to do anything with the fields, right? Just to be clear, that was said earlier. What is being proposed is that the money is still being used, but the actual fields themselves wouldn't be made of artificial turf, right? That you would look again at the whole solution, and hopefully, in that solution to a new field, you could look at alternatives such as a real well-drained grass field, right? So I just want to be clear. I don't think that people are saying, don't do anything, shut the whole project down. That's not what people are saying. They're saying, let's just look at this and make sure we're making the right decision for the aspects of the fields, which are not well-drained today, but could be well-drained in the future. And then one very simple, practical question. When we're voting on this, are we voting yes to say we're supporting the petition to not move forward with the artificial turf? Or are we saying, no, I don't want artificial turf? Just to be clear, because that's what I'm saying when I move that. Thank you.
The petition before us now essentially is asking for a sense of town meeting. If the vote is yes in favor of it, it's to urge the school committee to use grass fields, not turf fields. Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
Anesthetic, ooh, Anesthetic, 227 Highland Street. I'd like to speak to the crux of this issue, which is the petitioner's argument that grass is a viable alternative. Ms. Rowe referenced the Turi studies. I'd like to make the public aware that the Turi studies, number one, are not fully peer-reviewed in terms of other scientific comps. Secondly, all of the studies that have been touted have turf fields in the mix. For example, Marblehead is often included in the Turi studies. Marblehead has multiple turf fields that are used by the high school sports. It's not a comparable example. The same is true of Springfield, which is another Turi study example, multiple turf fields. The other one is Denison University, also has multiple turf fields. So when you highlight grass as a viable option, it needs to be an example that is only using grass. The Turi studies do not provide examples that only have grass. They all have turf. Secondly, I'm a board member of Hamilton Wenham U.Soccer. Our board has taken a formal position, and I've been authorized by our board president to speak to the condition of the iron rail. Hamilton Wenham U.Soccer annually spends tens of thousands of dollars trying to maintain the iron rail, and you are right, Mr. Britton, they look beautiful right now. They have done everything up to maybe 75% of what's recommended. We aerate, we overseed, we have professional maintenance by the patio company, we put blankets on in the winter. And when those blankets come off, this week, the fields are beautiful. My sixth-grade girls practiced on Field 8 on Tuesday, which is the second day of practice, and as Ms. Alberts very passionately spoke, it was already getting torn up. After two days of practice, the fields are now closed, they are unplayable. The reason we're here today is because our game was canceled due to unplayable grass fields that were meticulously maintained over the winter. So I would counter that grass is not viable in New England. I have yet to see any of the petitioners provide us with a comparable example of a grass field for high school sports. I would contend it does not exist because if it did, we would have heard about it. We would hear it from all of these different sources. We don't. We just don't have it. That is anecdotal, but that is a factual reality. As someone who has also played on grass fields and turf fields my entire life and coached on them, so I would encourage the voters to move forward and vote no against these misguided petitions that are slowing down a project that our schools desperately need, and I'm glad that we're talking about the mental health of students and the value of sports. Our students, especially students who have come through COVID, I'm aware, I got it. Worry's in front of the timer, though, so just taking my time, always, back up. Sports matter to kids, they matter to families, they matter to communities. The constant worry about when my game will be played, will it be canceled, will it be made up? Why have that joy? That has a psychological effect on children. We have delayed this for almost 15 years. We finally have the money, $5 million of it, I think, raised privately. It is time to vote no on the misguided undermining of last year's Democratic vote. I encourage everyone to vote no three times in a row. Let's build the fields.
Sir?
Steve Ozeowski, 156 Willow Street. I have the privilege of serving on the Hamilton Wenham Renovation Committee, having been honored for some 10-plus years. Prior to that, I was president of Hamilton Wenham U.Soccer for seven years and had participated on that board several years prior to being president. And so I just, I'm not bragging, I'm simply saying, I know a little bit about fields. And I would like to thank you for that information. In all of the meetings that we have had, no one has come with that info. And I would invite you to participate in some of our board meetings and committee meetings so that we can get this information out and vet it as necessary. But along those lines of vetting, I'll point out that, well, you know, 10 years ago, when we, when the REAP committee voted to allow the Patton Ridge condos to be developed on the fields that Mrs. Patton said could be used for sports fields, we agreed to allow that to be sold in order to get the money to, as, pardon the pun, seed money for the turf fields. And that million-dollar sale, $750,000 of it, remains as money to be used for this project. And in the meantime, the Patton Ridge condos, they have, they've contributed over, they've contributed over $1 million in property taxes to the town since that time. The point being that 10 years ago, when we approved that, we had been talking about turf fields for a couple of years already. So, you know, this has been going on and on. Numerous committees have vetted this. The planning board has taken the bulk of this. They are nice people, intelligent people. Most of these people are too. So.
Ms. Ozeowski, you're getting a little far of you.
Sorry, okay. I missed the time to get a PowerPoint in. This is Essex County. This is Essex County turf fields. Right in the middle is Hamilton and Wenham in white. All of these communities have access to a secondary school facility turf field, you know, some of them are regional. The point being, I've always thought that Hamilton was special, but I didn't want to be this kind of special. So, yes, I agree. I hope, I truly hope that people will come and participate at the REAP board, at their plan board, and let's get this out in the open. The last thing I'll say, 10 seconds. This is in phases that we can do other things. We can start with one phase, and then we can put off other phases. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me okay? Yep. Tracy Lutz, 39 Chestnut Street. I just wanted to have a little practical clarification, however we move with this. I know I've donated to the private funding and all that, so that funding will still be held, even if we have to delay this to get a solution that is practical and safe as possible, and get all the input, like I'm hearing, you know, new, better turf and all that. So if there is a delay, and it's for a good reason, all the funds we have raised will still be available for this, and the athletic facilities will not be short-changed as long as we do. Is that correct?
I have no opinion. I'm not allowed to have opinions.
Well, Amy, I guess that --
Okay, I guess, I think we, yeah, I think, so you want to know what happens with the money if this, if the project's delayed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I recognize Michelle Horgan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am part of the Hamilton Wenham Athletic Improvement Committee, and we have raised close to $1.6 million privately. We solicited money from our very generous donors on the basis that this would be for an artificial turf facility. If our patrons want the money back, we will return it to them if the artificial turf does not go forward. So that's something to consider, and that will be money then that would be, then town would have to make up. So we would return the monies if the patrons wanted that to happen.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am?
Dana Alera, 70 Echo Cove Road. I'm the chair of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee. I'd like to move to vote.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved, it's been moved in second that we move to a vote. Okay. And I find there's nobody at the microphone, so I think we can just go to a vote. No, ma'am, you're going to force me to have, you, it's been, we, ma'am, we, there was a call for the vote, and there was a motion, it was seconded, so we need to vote on it. It's not debatable. So I'll allow three minutes to vote on this. This is to essentially move the question, so. This is solely a motion to cut off debate. We then would, if it passes, well, depending on what happens, we would still go to a vote on the main motion. Three minutes to vote, starting now. What? Hold on. So, starting now.
Just to clarify, folks, just because there's a little confusion here. Ms. Alara asked to move the vote. We are now voting on whether to move the vote forward and, and the discussion.
And normally, normally, I would do not allow the speaker to call, to, to call the question, but there was no one else at the microphone at the time, so it appeared, I find that it was in order to allow the motion. And so you now have three minutes to vote either to yes, to cut off debate, or no, to continue debate at 12:09. Okay, starting now. Right, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we got in there. You know, three minutes, never seen it so long. The vote is 461, yes, to cut off debate, 63 to continue, 40, I'm sorry, 43 to cut off the debate. The debate, it's more than two-thirds, and I so declare. We now go to the main motion, which is Article 3-3, which is essentially a will of the town meeting to the school committee. Yeah, yeah, just to be clear, a yes vote is in favor of the petition, which would be to not support artificial turf and convey that to the school committee. So, we can go to a vote. Again, three minutes. The vote was 189, yes, 339, no. The motion fails, and I so declare. Article 3-4, I recognize Bill Shields.
Bill Shields, 721 Bay Road. I move that Article 3-4 be approved as printed in the warrant with one exception, replacing Article 2023/452 with Article 2023/4-2-14 of the warrant for the 2023 annual town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second. As I said I would, we're not going to talk any further. That's it. I'll go to a vote.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Shields. Are there any questions or comments relating to this matter, which is the amendment of the last year's vote?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Moderator, I was standing before the vote was...
No, no. A motion to move the question is non-debatable.
Okay. Well, thank you. But I just want to say, Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee, here's here, I'm Jeanne Moran, the chair, and I know I'm not allowed to speak, but...
And yet, despite all evidence, you are.
Please come to our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moran. I think, I, I think it's, I'm sensing the will of the town meeting that we move to a vote. So we will now vote on Article 3-4, which provides that, to the extent, I guess I should say, to the extent possible under applicable laws, that the, that the vote, that the town meeting vote and ballot vote last year in favor of a plan, an athletic field plan, including an artificial turf field, be amended so to, to not allow an artificial turf field. So, clear? If you're in favor of, of the...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So just to clarify with respect to the vote on this article, if you are in favor of adding the language to the vote that was previously taken at last year's town meeting to, quote, in further, and provided further, that the design, construction, reconstruction, and improvements shall not include or contain artificial turf, you would vote yes on this article to the extent that it has any legally binding effect. And if you are against it and you want to stick with the vote that was previously taken so that it would not be amended with that language, you would vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Very clear explanation. Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. Again, this is, you'll have three minutes to vote on Article 3, 3-4. The vote is 143 in favor, 217 against, the motion fails, and I so declare, 347, excuse me, against, the motion fails, and I so decree. Article 3-5, I recognize Bill Shields.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 3-5 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Just for clarity, a vote yes is for a moratorium, a vote no is against a moratorium.
Is there any new discussion or comments on this article? No, then we'll move to a vote? Ma'am, this better be about, about the, 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 the specific issue of the, of this article.
Yes, the specific issue, and if my line...
Again, my name's Jeanne Moran, I live at 21 Garfield Avenue. Specifically, if we vote, again, the vote is so confusing. If we allow the artificial turf fields to go forward, we are going backwards on our commitment as a town. In 2022, Hamilton voted at this town meeting to become net zero carbon by 2040. Now, we've made a lot of strides going towards that. You've seen, you know, the solar panels on, on the library, you've seen charging stations, you've seen all kinds of great things happening in our town. So I just want to point out to everyone that all of the materials, they create tons of carbon dioxide, you replace 5.5 acres of grass, you don't get the carbon sequestration, you don't get the oxygen that's produced, and you get heat sinks. If you walked on those fields, you know what I'm talking about, they burn your feet. So I'm just telling you, it's going backwards from what we've done before. Our banning of plastic bags, our mandatory compost, all of these things are part of Hamilton, and I'm just here to remind you of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then else, I'm rather sure we're ready for a vote. As before... As before, you'll have three minutes to vote on Article 3-5, which would basically be a three-year moratorium under the general bylaws of Hamilton for, again, not, to not allow artificial turf. So, a yes vote is in favor of that. A no vote is against. Voting starts now. 30 seconds. Voting is over. The vote is 150, yes, 323, no. The motion fails, and I so declare. Just before we recess, I'd like to thank some people. The employees of the schools and the towns. A lot of work goes into setting this up. The town boards, you, the voters, for coming and listening respectfully. And specifically, Laurie Wilson, AJ from the schools, and Bill Melville. And not forgetting Harrison Asher, the ex-Tubman Penex.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, may I make a...
I would entertain a motion to dissolve.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to dissolve.
All of us in favor. Ah, thank you for coming.
Please remember to return your voting clickers to the town clerk.